All right, so welcome to this public hearing. My name is Tina Chimuzu and I am a planner fellow at the Capitol Area Architectural and Planning Board. And I work to help implement the Commemorative Works Rules that have facilitated the process for this application. So once again, welcome to this public hearing for the application to add a new commemorative work on the state Capitol grounds for the emergency medical services line of duty death memorial. So I am going to quickly cover the following agenda items before proceeding to the actual comments submission. I'll provide a brief background on the application and then a summary of the staff findings. And then provide an overview of the Minnesota rules that are facilitating this application. And then I'll go over the public hearing requirements and then proceed to the next steps. Or what will happen to the application after the public hearing? So the application to add emergency medical services line of duty death memorial, which I'm going to be referring to as the EMS memorial from this point onwards, was submitted on January nine, twenty twenty five by Adam S. Harvey, who is the president and founder of EMS L O D D Memorial Foundation. In summary, the memorial seeks to honor emergency medical services personnel who have lost their lives in the line of duty, complete the memorialization of Minnesota's emergency response triad on the Capitol grounds, which currently honors fallen police officers and firefighters only, and represent Minnesota's unique role in advancing pre-hospital medical care and to highlight contributions for Minnesota's tribal medical services. This application was submitted by Minnesota Rules two four hundred, seven hundred, two seven hundred, and is being reviewed under the same rules. This is a timeline of some of the emergency medical services achievements in Minnesota from nineteen sixty six to twenty twenty that were submitted in the application by the applicant. I'll not speak to them all, I'll just mention a few such as the mention that Minnesota became one of the first states to develop organ services following National Highway Traffic Safety Act in nineteen sixty six. And in nineteen sixty nine, University of Minnesota established one of the nation's first paramedic training programs. And in nineteen seventy, Minnesota hosted the first national registry of emergency medical technicians paramedic examination. You can find the complete application on the cardboard website, which includes a listing of all these achievements. And so per the Commemorative Works Rules, once the application was submitted in January, cardboard staff reviewed it for completeness. And after assessing it, advised applicants to make some revisions. And after the revisions were made, the application was found to be complete by March seventh, twenty twenty five. And so following the completeness check, the next steps according to the rules process is for the board to make a determination on whether the application meets all of the conditions in Minnesota Rules two four hundred, two seven oh three, subpart two, before it can be moved along in the Commemorative Works Process for further review. And the conditions in the rules, in subpart two of the rules, as seen on the screen stipulate that there has to be documented public support of the artwork. The artwork has to have lasting statewide significance for Minnesotans. The artwork has to be respectful of the diversity of Minnesotans. And the artwork has to provide a rich experience to broaden the understanding of Minnesota's shared history, heritage, and culture. So basically, the application has to meet all of these four criteria. Staff conducted a preliminary review of the application and determined that so far all the conditions in these rules have been met. And details of the review process can be found in the EMS memorial memo that was presented to the board on June third, June third, twenty twenty five and is available on the Capitol website. And so per the rules, the next step of the review process would be for the board to gather comments from the public on whether the application meets all the stated conditions. So at this point, the board has not yet made that decision. And they will take into account all the public comments that have been shared at this public hearing as well as the just ended public here, public comment period that hosted from June nine to July tenth. So, um, once again, this public hearing is being held to gather input on whether all of the conditions in the rules have been met for the board, for the board to consider the application. And once again, those conditions have been displayed on the screen. And as I've mentioned, that this public hearing is being conducted in addition to the public comment period that we just finalized on June tenth, and that was a thirty one day public comment period. So just to provide an overview of the next steps that will take place after this public hearing is that staff, cardboard staff will find who summarize the comments received during this public hearing and the just ended public comment period. And then make a recommendation to the board on whether all of the conditions in subpart two of the Minnesota Rules two four hundred, two seven And then after that has been done, then the board will meet to review the requests, the comments and recommendations, and host another public hearing. And then the board will vote on whether the conditions have been met. If the board votes yes, then a site selection study will commence together with the applicant, cardboard staff, and the cardboard architectural advisors. And then following that site selection study, a site recommendation will be made to the board. And then the board will meet again to review and vote on the proposed site station and another opportunity for public information will be provided at that meeting.
How long did the site selection study last?
Um, so at this point, we do not have a specific time period that the site selection study will last, but it will definitely commence right after the next board meeting, depending on the decision that the board makes.
Thank you.
So with that being said, we'll now proceed to the actual comments submission process. So based on the number of participants that we have, at this point, we'll limit the public commenting to two to three minutes. And just a few instructions, if you're, if you'd like to make a comment in person, when called up, you can raise your hand and when called upon, you can come forward to the commenting table and have a seat. And if you'd like, you may state your name and your affiliation with the EMS memorial application. If you are online, you may raise your hand as demonstrated on the screen. And then when called upon and mute your mic to speak. And if you're online using a mobile device, you will follow the same process where you raise a hand and then you can unmute and speak, though the interface of the mobile phone will look different as demonstrated on the screen. You may also submit a written comment via email, that's on the screen. And there was also an opportunity for written comments that could be submitted via, via mail. And they were supposed to have been sent to the cardboard by today. And so with those few remarks, we may begin the public hearing process. I don't know if there are any questions or comments before we do that. If there are none, then the floor is open for public comments. Thank you.
All right, so my name is Sean Castro. I'm a paramedic currently working with M Health Fairview. So we serve the northern half of Dakota County as well as any M Health Fairview hospitals throughout the greater metro area. And I have never been to a hearing like this before. But there's a good reason that this is my first, and that's because I strongly support the addition of an EMS memorial to the Minnesota Capitol grounds. Enough that I'm happy to be here in what is for my schedule currently the middle of the night. I know we've already kind of discussed in the material the need for memorial honoring the third branch of public safety in addition to the existing memorials we have on the Capitol grounds for law enforcement and firefighters. So I wanted to convey a personal anecdote instead. When paramedic firefighter Adam Finseth and his colleagues were murdered, there was a temporary memorial set up at the Burnsville City Hall. And I had a chance to go view that memorial after my shift one morning. And it was so incredible to see the outpouring of support from the community as well as to have a physical space to mourn their loss and having a permanent physical space to do that in the state of Minnesota would be greatly appreciated. They're not, you know, as we know, these memorials are not just for the dead, but also for the living as well. Additionally, the focus that the memorial has had on honoring all forms of EMS in the state, specifically tribal EMS, has inspired me to want to learn more about those forms of EMS. Despite working in EMS in Minnesota for the past six years, I had never considered the important role that tribal EMS has in our state's EMS system. And that this memorial will help educate myself and many other people on this specific issue. So in light of all of this, I request that the board approve the application to add an EMS memorial to the Capitol grounds. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. I see we have a hand online. Adam, please go ahead.
Good afternoon. My name is Adam McPlon. I am the ambulance director for the West Concord Fire and Ambulance in West Concord, Minnesota. I'm also a member of the EMS Honor Guard here in the state of Minnesota. Today, I'd like to comment briefly on the memorial and the need for the recognition of the fallen brothers and sisters in EMS. Right now, our bulk of our Honor Guard is actually in Washington, DC, attending the national memorial service. We in EMS, at this point, still do not even have a national EMS memorial for our fallen around the country. And it would be amazing for Minnesota to step forward and be leading that charge and showing that we respect that sacrifice, not only of the fallen EMS member, but of that family that has lost that member. It would give an opportunity for us to be on that same level as our fellow public safety members in fire and law enforcement who have had memorials for many years. It would give us an opportunity to have a place to go and show that respect and for the families to go and see the respect shown to their fallen. EMS is often overlooked because we are not great self-supporters. We do not go out in our brash about what we do. It's just what we do. This would give an opportunity for us to show the respect and the honor for those who have done this selfless job and lost their lives doing so. I appreciate that the state is taking the effort to look at this and I hope this goes forward in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Adam. I don't know if we have any additional comments in the room.
Thank you. My name is Butch Inks. I'm the fire chief here in city St. Paul, our capital city. And I want to publicly state that I am in support of this EMS memorial. To echo some of the statements that were made already, oftentimes people view us as a fire department, but we're also a one of the largest EMS departments in the state of Minnesota, responding to nearly seventy thousand calls a year, the majority of those EMS in nature. I think it's extremely important that we intentionally call out the work that EMS personnel do each and every day. They choose this profession, they choose it to serve, they choose it to do things for other people. They choose people over themselves. And to intentionally have a memorial that recognizes those services would be just an incredible thing that the state of Minnesota can do. And as mentioned by Adam, that to be a leader nationwide, to have this memorial would really send a message to what we feel about the EMS providers. Again, I'm in support of this. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
I'm Mike Cox, the president of all the St. Paul Fair Local Twenty One's Honor Guard. I've had a distinct honor of doing that for the last probably fifteen years. I've probably planned the last eight to ten of our line of duty deaths. I've had the distinct honor of being very deeply involved with the Burnsville tragedy and running a memorial service for that from the Honor Guard side of it, as well as with the tragedies that just unfolded with the Horvman's family. It should also be noted that this tragedy that occurred with our legislative staff, people here the last few weeks or a month ago, those were covered by private ambulance services, like full-time agencies such as ours, St. Paul, as one of the largest assets in the metro and the capital cities that our chief just said. And it's, it's a very distinct position to have a spot for people to go and have that mourning or that closure. We have that here at the state Capitol grounds with the firefighters. We have it for the police departments as well, law enforcement. We have a national memorial as well. We also have our internationals out in Colorado Springs. We need to bring this a step forward. We need to honor these people. I also work for Alina as a paramedic as well. And it's private services that cover a big majority of the state. So we need to do something to step up and honor those people as well. So, thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Robert Ball online, you may go ahead.
Thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Robert Ball. I am retired deputy chief of operations for Hennepin EMS and currently the chief of ambulance service for the University of Minnesota EMS. I was also a charter member of the Minnesota EMS Honor Guard, which was created after the September eleventh attacks in order for us to help remember and honor fallen EMS providers. Because again, as many of my colleagues have pointed out, our partners in law enforcement and the fire service already had positions like that and we did not. Moving forward, as was pointed out, our partners in the fire service and law enforcement have memorials, including fixed memorials here at the state Capitol and in Washington, DC. The National EMS Memorial currently is loaded into vehicles and carried around to different places. It is that small and that temporary. So for Minnesota to take the step to recognize that some of the people who are giving all to their fellow people here in the state are not firefighters, are not law enforcement officers, and as Chief Inks pointed out, don't necessarily work for a government agency such as a city or a county, but rather work for a hospital system or a private service, but deliver those same needed resources. I support a hundred percent having a place where we can honor our fallen EMTs and paramedics. And I further thought it was very, very important that we include our tribal members, which again kind of get woefully put off to the side far too often. And having a memorial that recognizes not only our public and private EMS, but our tribal EMS is important. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert, for your comment. Do you have any other comments in the room?
So I'm Representative Hewitt. I represent Rayl's Mountain Apple Valley, but I'm also a former EMT. Worked in the industry for thirty years. There's about five of us in the legislature that are former EMS people. This project is so important to us. It rises us above the level of other states that have not done this yet. It's time that we recognize this. You're hearing the difference between private and public. When you're on a scene, you don't care who's private, who's public. You're there to help. These people have dedicated their lives to, and their families, their birthday parties and things that they've missed. This is the minimal the state can help them do. And I have no qualms about saying many of us that have worked in this space will be out helping them fundraise for this project. We'll see what legislators can do for this project. But it's really now is the time. And I think that the commission here has to really make a stand and say, let's make sure they have the space to do this. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Representative, for your comment. Another comment from the back.
Thank you. My name's Kyle Hornberg, president of St. Paul Firefighters Local Twenty One. Represent nearly five hundred firefighters, paramedic EMTs for the city of St. Paul, Minnesota. And what I would say is that we're very fortunate for us as firefighters to have our own memorial on the Capitol grounds. But that cards out nearly, you know, several thousand of EMS providers who have go to work every day and not knowing whether or not they're going to come home at the end of the day. And so the least we can do is honor them with a same or similar memorial to recognize their sacrifice and give them the same dignity, level of dignity that we provide for our firefighters and our police officers. Because we're all on the same team, we're all on the same public safety team. So and then I'd like to publicly commend Adam for taking the lead on the project and pushing everything forward. And we're very, very, very happy to support them in full on this project. So, thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Good afternoon. I'm Colleen Morczynek, thirty-five-year medic at Lakeview EMS in Stillwater. Currently, Regions EMS, also the founder of Hero Invitational Hockey Tournament and on the Critical Incident Stress Management Team for debriefings after critical incidents. I just did a national EMS memorial bike ride to honor the fallen from Eagan, Minnesota to Chicago. And when we got to Chicago, I was completely disappointed that our endpoint was a firefighter memorial site because they also don't have one for EMS. Thank you, Adam, for setting this forth. But I think this would probably be one of the best things that happened on the Capitol grounds in the near future. I think it is completely necessary. I think it is a great place for people to go to respect those that have fallen in this line of work. And even to just use it as an end route for a big event like what we did would be amazing as well. That's it. Thanks for doing this, Adam.
Thank you for your comment. Do we have any comments online? Any other comments from the room? Go ahead.
Hello, my name is Nikki Holm and I have the deep privilege of being a chaplain for a line of health EMS. And in that role, I get to accompany our first responders as they do what they do. I get to do ride-alongs and I get to see them show up to people's homes with compassion and competency and deep, deep pride in the privileged work they do. And I know that the public doesn't want to get to see that. They get to hear stories and they get to kind of get a sense. They don't get to hear what they hear and see what they see and smell what they smell and see the grace with which they show up each and every day, not knowing what cause they're going to be, the critical cause, what cause are going to be dangerous, what cause are going to be heart-wrenching and painful. And they do it just out of service to the community. And this is the least the community can do to provide that service and then gratitude back. So I hold heartily on behalf of my colleagues, support this initiative, support the work that Adam is doing, support our EMS colleagues and firefighters and police.
Thank you for your comment. Do you have a hand from Barrett? Please, you may go ahead. Barrett, you may go ahead.
Hi, my name is Barrett Bergstrom. I'm actually a registered nurse in an emergency department in Edina. And I just wanted to kind of recognize that paramedics and EMTs are some of the most important people in emergency services. They help to ensure the medical safety of both patients and emergency responders. Their dedication to their jobs, despite the constant risk of potential dangers, should be recognized. They're part of the team that enters homes or environments that are unpredictable and unsafe. And I have seen firsthand paramedics be in great danger due to unwell patients. So I appreciate all the work that they put in and I think their services are very, very similar to those of firefighters and police. And I think it would be really honorable to honor them alongside them at the Capitol.
Thank you for your comment. Do we have any other comments from the room? I see we have one online. May I go ahead, Adam?
I'm finally done, Harvey. I'm in Minnesota, currently serving as the chief of EMS for Waylia Health up in Canaanet County. I work for federal teams as well as another local agency here in the state. And then I'm a captain with Minnesota EMS Honor Guard. So I've had the sad privilege of planning multiple line of duty death scenarios and serving in so as well. First of all, I am here to obviously express my full support for the creation of the EMS memorial beyond Minnesota State Capitol Ground and ask that this boards support that decision and help move that forward. Secondly, I want to thank everyone that's online while we're behind me for coming here and showing themselves. This started off as a random project six years ago. Two years ago, Adam McPlon and I walked down here to try and convince Judy Seberger, Senator Judy Seberger, to assist us with this and it kind of led us onto this whole project right here. So I'll talk a little bit about the subpart two, just so that we tap on those. So subpart two, a public support. Very clearly, as we can see behind me and before me, I have the backing of multiple organizations, individuals, and communities from across Minnesota. We have submitted numerous letters of support from EMS agencies, civic leaders, associations, unions, as well as just individuals, both family members and just random citizens, showing that they believe that this should be there. The proposed memorial also includes the tribal field of all eleven nations as a permanent feature, which as far as I'm aware, none of the memorials have anything to do with any of the tribal contributions and kind of diverges by a little bit of that. Moving on to subpart two B, lasting state life significance against the EMS professionals that respond in every community, urban, rural, and tribal. They answer the call, stand night, often in dangerous conditions and frequently without any kind of recognition. We don't seek recognition. We're there to do a job. This memorial honors those who made the ultimate sacrifice while also cementing EMS as an essential component of Minnesota's vast public safety history. Subpart two, section T, respect for Minnesota's diversity. The EMS workforce reflects the diversity of Minnesota itself, from rural volunteers to the urban medics, from tribal EMS to multilingual birth responders. This memorial honors a wide range of individuals who serve with courage and compassion. This design emphasizes representation, inclusion, and equity and included just in broad inclusive statement because anyone can be in EMS and we want to make sure that they're covered. Lastly, subpart two, section Delta, educational and cultural value. This memorial will be more than a tribute. It'll be a tool for public education. Positions on the Capitol grounds, it will be visited by school groups, residents, and tourists. The national, the national, the Minnesota EMS Honor Guard would be here for today's, actually in Washington, DC for the national memorial service. I can see Sean Storm in online right now, who is the commander of the Minnesota EMS Honor Guard along with Adam McPlon as the training officer. And they would be here for with intentions of probably telling us how if there wasn't a memorial here, we would be doing the annual service here in Minnesota to honor Minnesota responders. This will also help teach the public, you know, EMS's vital roles and sacrifices made by those who serve. In an extent, the historical narrative currently represented on the Mall where EMS is notably absent. The Capitol Mall currently honors our fallen police officers and firefighter brothers and sisters, as it should, but lacks a place of recognition for EMS professionals who gave their lives in the line of service to serve others. but lacks a place of recognition for EMS professionals who gave their lives in the line of service to serve others. This proposal is not asked for more, it asks for parity, for equal honor for those who have served and died in uniform. We believe that this project meets all the conditions required under Minnesota Rule 2400.2703, subpart two. I respectfully urge the board to move forward this proposal and to continue with site selection and detailed design review. We're here to honor the sacrifice and to support the legacy. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Adam, for your comment. For those who are just joining us online, if you'd like to make a comment, please raise a hand and then we'll call upon you and you can unmute yourself and speak. So if there's anyone online who would like to make an additional comment, please go ahead. Is there anyone else from the room who would like to make a comment? Please go ahead.
My name is Isaac Coward. I'm a firefighter EMT, St. Paul Fire Department. I think that having a memorial like this is very, is very important for not just the state of Minnesota, but everything. Even working as a firefighter EMT, we're dual-staffed, like 80% of our calls, I'm on an ambulance. I'm helping people. And I'm helping all kinds of people working here in the city of St. Paul. Doesn't matter color of your skin, doesn't matter what language you speak, if you're rich or poor. I've had the opportunity to help all kinds of people from all walks of life. I think having a memorial like this for EMS is, is just, it's really important, just I think to kind of shine a light, to obviously honor the people who have died doing this. But honestly, to shine a light and like help bring it forward for the people who are currently working to make things better. Grew up here in Minnesota, from Rochester, like obviously home of the Mayo Clinic. Currently a paramedic student at Regions Hospital. Minnesota has a very robust like healthcare system and I think having a memorial like this, and if there is no national, nothing like this even on a national level, I don't think of a better place than to kind of lead the way on something like this, to have a memorial like this to, for EMS to get their, you know, the recognition that it really deserves. So I think it's a very important thing to do.
Thank you for your comment. Pete Johnson online. You may go ahead.
Thank you for the opportunity. My name is Pete Johnson. I'm the state rep for Central and Western Duluth up here. Also a firefighter for the city going on 20 years. And we serve every day with the men and women of the Mayo Ambulance Service up here. It's past time to recognize those folks for the sacrifices that they make. And to some of the other comments, making sure the public knows what these folks do and the sacrifices they make so that it can't be easily forgotten when somebody does make that ultimate sacrifice. So happy to support this as my capacity as a, as a union member, as a firefighter and as a state legislator and excited to move forward with it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Any other comments from the room? If there are no additional comments from the room and online, oh, go ahead, Sean.
Good afternoon. My name is Sean Starman and like Mr. Harvey had let you guys know, I am the commander of the Minnesota EMS Honor Guard. Today, though, I am speaking as a board member for the National EMS Memorial Service. And one thing that we hear as board members and the volunteers and the honor guards that come out from across the nation to honor those EMS providers that have sacrificed in line of duty is a lot. The family members want a place to be able to grieve. We have, unfortunately, within the last few years in the state of Minnesota, have experienced loss of EMS providers. And one thing that resonates through every line of duty death is we hear from the families, "Please don't forget the sacrifice we made." And it isn't just the families. It's the EMS services they work for. It's the communities they serve. So i- in closing, in respect of everyone's time, I, on behalf of the national service, we even would fully support having a state memorial on the Capitol grounds. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment. Seems like we have no additional comments from the room. So in light of that, we are going to take a 10-minute recess. And if there are no additional comments required to be submitted during that time, then we'll close the public hearing. Thank you. So we'll take the 10-minute recess. Thank you. So we're back from our recess. For those who may just be joining us online, if you'd like to make a comment, you can raise a hand and we'll call upon you. This public hearing, once again, is being conducted in order to gather input on whether all of the conditions in Minnesota rules to 400, 2703, subpart two, have been met for the cardboard to consider the application to commemorate the EMS memorial at the state Capitol grounds. So I don't know if there are any additional comments from the room. Right? It looks like we do not have any additional comments. So with that, we can, I think, officially close this public hearing since we do not have any public comments forthcoming at this point.
If you, if you would like a comment from the public, I'd be happy to.
Sure, please come forward.
No, I can't believe there aren't more public. We owe the public, all of you guys, tremendous amount of thanks. I don't know, again, fantastic. I can't believe there isn't a spiritual home in these guys and a memorial be that home. We need to do it. Absolutely need to do it. Otherwise, it's just a case of buildings, vehicles and the unseen heart that camaraderie that all these guys share. We need to give them a memorial and the public needs to see it. And it's a place where we can focus and, and just needs to happen. Thank you.
Thank you for the comment.
Thank you all. And to all the people that have gone before you. Thank you.
Right? Do we have any other comments in the room? Do we have any additional comments online? Right? If there are no comments at this point, I'll just quickly, once again, spell out an overview of what's going to happen after this public hearing. So once again, staff will summarize the comments that have been received during the public comment period that just ended. That was conducted from June 10, June, June 9 to July 10. And then include the comments from this public hearing. And those will be presented to the board. And a recommendation will be made by the Capitol staff on whether all of the conditions have been made in subpart two. And that recommendation will be, is based on these comments as well as staff analysis of the application. And then the board will meet. It did, has not, has not yet been set for the next board meeting. But once the board meets, once that's decided, the board will review the requests, the comments and the recommendation from Capitol staff. And then at that meeting, another public hearing will be hosted and then a vote will be done on whether the conditions have been met or not. If the board votes the application forward, then a site selection study will begin. And that site selection study will include the applicant, Capitol staff and architecture advisors. And once that site select, site selection study is done, a recommendation will be made as to the board in terms of the site. And then the board will once again meet and review the recommendation and then vote on the proposed location. And another opportunity for public input will be provided at that meeting. So those will be the steps that will follow after this public hearing. And with those few remarks, we have come to the end of our public hearing today. I thank you all for your comments and thank you, Adam, for the application. Right? Thank you.